Evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the full Board of Alderman meeting for February 11th. We have a special guest tonight from Mead School, student Kaylee, connects to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can let her lead and we can just stay silent, hopefully she can do a way better job than us. So hit it firmly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, Trish, can we get a roll call?
Muted.
She's muted. Trish. Everyone can unmute themselves.
Sorry about that. Alderman King. Alderman Farrar. Alderman Adamowski.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Yeah.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Janetti.
Here.
Alderman Nutt. Alderman Hardy. Alderman Yaman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mammon.
Here.
President Short.
Here.
Alderman Lovinsky.
Here.
Alderman Duranty. You have 10 present and four absent.
Okay, I declare quorum.
Who's here?
Not.
You have 11.
11 and 3. Still a quorum.
Oh, I had not. I had not already. So you still have 10 and 4.
All right, back to 10 again. Still a quorum. All right, moving on, before we move into the minutes, I did receive a late communication from Finance, and I'd like to get a motion to add that to as a late communication picked up later.
Make a motion or I'll second it.
Motion by Rivers, second by, was it Mammon? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll pick that up. We have three regular communications and then we'll pick that up as the fourth communication later on in the meeting. And I think Cart will address that. All right, so we have the minutes for approval from the January 14th meeting. Hopefully you had a chance to read those.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes by Mammon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
I did not attend the meeting, Josh, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, one abstention. Adamowski. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to public session. Same rules as always, and anyone from the public who wishes to address the board, please make yourself known.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nell. Glad to be here. The only thing I wanted to just add, it's a question I just wanted to ask. I have a friend who lives in Derby and she made me aware that they're having a 350th anniversary celebration. I don't know if it's like a year-long thing. It's comprised of different events maybe, but as little as I know about the history of the valley, my understanding is that Ansonia was once part of Derby and that it got split up and the towns got created. So I just wondered, it's just a question, whether or not there might be any desire to have a participation, have Ansonia participate and represent as a sister city. I think one of the things they're having is some kind of something called a sister city visit on Derby Day weekend. So I'm just tossing it out as a question. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? Anyone else from the public? Third and final call, anyone from the public to address the board in public session? Seeing none, we'll close the public session and move on to the public official session, starting with Mayor Cassetti. And you're muted. We didn't want to hear it anyways, Mayor. I think everybody got muted.
Okay, everybody, everybody was muted. Could everybody hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, President Stewart, members of the Board of Alderman residents of the great city of Ansonia. I want to take a moment to remember Bobo Bobby Kulikowski, who passed away last week. Bobo was a dedicated worker of the Ansonia Senior Center, a close friend of mine and a devoted family man. He will be missed. Let's please have a moment of silence for Bobo before we begin. Thank you. Yesterday, for the charter, I submitted my preliminary budget to vote. As I, as I have said for many years, that any budget submitted at this premature time must necessarily be based upon assumptions and predictions regarding revenue and expenses. This is primarily because the state of Connecticut's budget, along with the final state funding to the city and its Board of Education, has yet to be finalized. Additionally, the city has yet to receive confirmation of crucial numbers, including updated health insurance renewal rates. Given the above, my budget proposal must be considered preliminary and subject to change. It will be a work in progress until all projections and assumptions can be confirmed. The budget proposal at this early date and in its preliminary form necessitates a mill rate increase of 2.61 mils. This is despite total estimated expenditures on both city and Board of Education portions of the budget, being held significantly below the rate of inflation. Specifically, the preliminary budget calls for total expenditure increases of 2.23%. This breaks down to a 2.19% increase on the city side and a 2.26% increase to the Board of Education. The national rate of inflation, for reference, is at 2.9%. The challenge that we face with this budget, however, is on the revenue side of the balance sheet. Recent legislation imposed by the state of Connecticut has shifted a tremendous financial burden to the taxpayers of the city of Ansonia, directly resulting in a total loss of $25 million in assessed value from the city's grand list. More specifically, the state's decision to cap the motor vehicle tax rate and refusal to fully reimburse Connecticut municipalities for the corresponding loss of revenue has resulted in a loss of $21 million in assessed value from our grand list. Also, the state's institution of new local tax benefits, again, without reimbursements to municipalities for the loss in tax revenue caused by those benefits, has created an additional loss of approximately $3 million in lost value. Further, since 2008, the state has refused to update its level of education cost-sharing funding. The Education Cost Sharing Grant, or the ECS, provided directly to the city. Yet while the ECS funding has remained stagnant at its 2008 level, Ansonia taxpayers have absorbed nearly 20 years of local increases to the Board of Education. This year alone, an updated level of support would provide the city with over $6 million, allowing us to both increase funding to our schools and lower our mill rate. Finally, with respect to the budget, I want to remind everyone that our Finance Department has calculated that an increase of approximately 1.25 mils or more will constitute the threshold for a public referendum pursuant to Section 43D. I can assure you that I am continuing to work with the finance and staff on this budget, and we'll have more to report as the information trickles in from the state. I want to announce some good news. Thank you to my staff. We have secured $4,800,000 in federal grant funds for our Noggett River Greenway from Persian Drive to Wakeley Avenue. Finally, I want to remind you about two events coming up. Nolan Field and the Citywide Field Projects are moving forward, and my staff will cover the details later on. But in March, we are going to have what I call a bid farewell to the old Nolan Field event. We will notify you of the details, but we would like people to attend and put a shovel in the ground where the grass currently is and will be replaced with turf. There will be an unveiling of the Opera House feasibility study with the presentation and renderings from the architects next week, Tuesday, February 18th, at the Senior Center at 5:30. Light refreshments will be served. I hope to see you all there at both events. That's it for now. Thank you, and God bless you all, and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and we'll move on to Corporation Counsel, John Marini, next.
Mr. President, members of the Board, hope you've been enjoying the weather and the snow. Let's kick off with an update on Nolan Field, as the mayor let the cat out of the bag this moments ago. So when we last talked about Nolan Field, we were talking about UI and making sure that they were off the field in time for baseball. Well, since then, our school building committee, headed up by Mr. Stewart, co-chaired by our Board of Ed Chairman Rich Bishara. Our school building committee has had its first meeting. It's about a week and a half ago. It met with our city engineer, DeCarlo Indal, and for the first time began to talk about the plans for the renovation of its portion of the city fields, Nolan Field. Essentially, they reviewed plans that were vetted, discussed at length by our field advisory board last year, and they came to a decision, they did come to a unanimous decision to select a configuration and to move forward. DeCarlo Indal believes that if we follow the schedule they've laid out, that construction can begin on the field as early as late March into mid-April, thereby allowing Nolan Field to be ready for football season, playable for football season with its brand-new turf field and enhancements. And obviously, that's quite a change of direction from where we were just last month. The committee was very adamant that if we were going to go forward on this timeline, which was preferred, that we, of course, first make sure that baseball, varsity, junior varsity, and middle school was taken care of in terms of not having to miss their season. So in coordination with Athletics Director at the school's Coach Brockett, the coaches, Public Works, and Fielding several quotes, we do have a plan in place whereby the teams would play their games on the road for this year. They play away games, and we're looking at making temporary improvements to the practice field in order to allow them to go forward and practice within the city. And it's simply being contemplated that that makes a lot more sense than trying to find what is truly hard to find practice space outside of the city. As you can imagine, if another town or city does have practice space, they have baseball teams and those fields are in use. There's also the burden of transportation, and so the more logical way to go here is to simply make sure our practice field is playable. We're looking right now at some quotes. It looks like we do have a low quote that is below the bid threshold at about $20,000. We're in the process of circulating that quote right now with the Athletics Director, with the baseball coach, and with the school building committee. We'll be receiving that tomorrow morning to make sure that all the elements are, all the elements needed for getting that ready for practice are included in the quote. That way, we're on the same page. And if it looks like that's good to go, we will proceed with locking that in so that our baseball knows they have places to practice during the disruption. There is a timeline for construction right now being developed by our city engineers, along with some, the preparation for potential bidding on the project. So all that information will start to be shared. We're looking at creating essentially an open portal. That way, anyone interested, anyone interested can kind of see, okay, what's happening with the project? Where are we with the project? This is one that takes a lot of coordination, not just for approvals, but as you can imagine, as we start to take a look at the redevelopment of Nolan Field, you're talking about the potential disruption of a lot of schedules. So we need to be razor-sharp in terms of coordination between the coaches, the parents, the teams. So the more information, the more transparent, the better. You're likely going to be looking at another school building committee coming up very soon, if not next week, in order to start to talk about where we are and where we're hoping to be. But that's a big thing to put on your radar. Those enhancements, city fields are going to start this year. And of course, we're not forgetting about the enhancements to fields outside the scope of Nolan, in particular Colony and the Nature Center, and looking at Nelligan. And you're going to hear more on that at our next meeting. DeCarlo and Dahl are going to be, of course, looking at this as a total, while we split two different directions, right? For the potential, capitalizing on potential reimbursement. We're going down the school building committee route for Nolan, but the other projects are remaining with the Board of Alderman. But to make sure there's no loss in efficiency and synergy, our engineers are really considering this as one big project. And of course, we want to make sure that we stay on budget so that all of this work falls within the $10 million approval that we got from the voters over a year ago. Any questions on that portion? Because that, there's been some change there, and I know a lot of you have that project on your minds. And I also note that some of the Alderman here were either on the, on the school building committee or part of our Alderman Fields Committee Subcommittee that met a parallel to them at the last meeting. But any questions, any concerns about that?
John, I'll just note that you mentioned a future meeting and the school building commission had voted to meet the third Thursday of every month, so that would be next Thursday at 6:30. It'd be the next regularly scheduled meeting anyways, if things are lined up. If not, you know, it could be, could be adjusted, but that would be the regularly scheduled meeting.
Yep, that, that will very likely be a needed meeting. As we'll have a bunch to discuss by then. Any other issues or concerns? Okay, moving on to our next update, ordinances. We had an ordinance committee last week. Ordinance committee meeting, we've basically honed down to two ordinances right now. The housing code and the storefront vacancy regulation. I'm going to be preparing a red line that shows where we started and where we are now. Hope to have that out this week. In the meantime, we need this Board of Alderman to schedule a public hearing on the draft ordinances. That way, the public can weigh in on the direction that we're going with, with these regulations. And so I'd ask, you know, either now or sometime during the course of this meeting, that we do pick a date for that public hearing. And of course, we will have those draft ordinances in their, in their current form and in their original form with the red lines available for the public to review. Like that to be sufficiently ahead of the public hearing so that the public can digest it and comment on those in an informative way.
Alderman Yaman, any comments?
Yeah, John, I was going to ask, if you, while you're talking about it, did you want to schedule that in conjunction with the next Alderman meeting? Try to do it at 6 o'clock or so it coincides with this meeting? I think that makes the most sense to try to get the most participation.
Think that's a good idea.
Okay. I would make that motion then, Mr. President.
Okay, motion by Yaman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, who was that?
Me, Mammon.
Mammon. To set a public hearing for that at 6 o'clock one month from now, the Tuesday before the
Yeah, it'll be March 11th at 6:00 PM.
March 11th, 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining? All right, good. And we actually, we'll talk about the ordinances later.
Yep, and also, I don't know if a separate, separate motion is needed, but that's also required, the publication, John, and everything like that, to make sure that your officer, the clerk, takes care of that. Thank you.
Yep, but the date and place, we'll work around that with the deadlines for publication and want to get that out to the media so more eyes can be on it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, you may have noticed that your packets, your virtual packets are a little heavier this month. You take a look under Staff Reports. There are more of them. We've initiated city staff meetings, city management meetings. We've had two so far with our department heads and City Hall. Purpose of these meetings are, of course, for, you know, general coordination and communication, but also to really hone in on the goals and objectives of our various departments. And thinking about it, of course, some of our departments have very straightforward goals and objectives. Think about tax collection, right? Very easy to see what's going on there. Where other departments, you know, could, could always benefit from kind of lasering in on what we're looking to, to push forward. Like, say, a service department, like the Senior Center or the library, trying to make our, our steps forward quantifiable. How many visitors per day, per week, per month? Giving us an understanding of where we're going and how we can do better. So you're going to be seeing those reports refined as we go along to reflect goals and objective reports, an overall goal and the objectives that we're taking on to get us there. And so while I'd consider it a work in progress, I think our departments have really stepped up. They put a lot, I believe, into the first draft, first round of reports that you see in front of you. And of course, if you have any questions, they'd be more than happy to be able to communicate directly with this board on any matter in that report, but I think it gives you a great insight into what's going on with your city staff. The mayor did mention the Opera House event. That's February 18th. Of course, it's going to be very interesting and insightful in terms of what the vision is right now for the Opera House. And of course, this is a vision that's backed up by data. You know, for the first time, taking a look at the feasibility of this project with the goal of creating a budget and, of course, what that end result would mean. But let me take a step back again and remind both the Board and the public. This project is, of course, important for many reasons. One of those reasons is that it is, of course, tied to the demolition of SHW and copper and brass. And there's, of course, a requirement from the state that the demolition of historic properties does require what they call mitigation on the part of the city. Essentially, if you're going to be knocking down what they deem to be historic property, you got to make it up somehow. And of course, this project is just that. And SHPO, the agency that has, has that oversight, was thrilled with this project from the very beginning. Their, that our investment into this public-private project, the remediation of this historic structure helps to mitigate, helps to make up for that loss of what's being demolished to copper and brass. And of course, it's a win-win because the demolition of copper and brass and SHW is our path to revenue, right? That's our light at the end of the tunnel, our ability to generate serious, serious revenue for the city and its residents going forward. And the Opera House, an ability to enhance our, our city in a very unique way to create a center for community, for arts, for culture, something to really supplement anything going on on Main Street, from our restaurants to our shops. So it is a win-win project, one daunting for a long time, but it's becoming more and more realistic as we get the data. This is a great opportunity to see firsthand and hear firsthand from our, from our team, from our engineers and designers. Finally, want to thank our, our supervisors and Nature Center unit. They're working right now on the ratification of the contracts that this board sent to them. So big thanks to everyone involved, getting us through another round of negotiations. And let me just ask for executive session. I need to have the matter of Benchmark versus Ansonia under executive session for tonight. And that's pending. Any questions? My report.
Do you need a motion to add that to executive session, John?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to add Benchmark to the execution by Yaman. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mammon, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take that up under executive session. Any questions for John tonight from the Alderman? Ooh, you got off easy. Hey, give a really long report and then you don't get any questions.
Wasn't really long, though.
So Sheila, you know, you know how you can approach us, either super-long report, no questions, or you can do a short report and we'll hammer you.
We got pages here, pages.
Next, Director of Economic Development, Sheila O'Malley.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Alderman residents. Few updates. John says that, talked about the Opera House, and yes, the next steps are, are coming up in, in that, you know, we'll try to access capital, building money, reconstruction money, renovation money. The resolution on the agenda says the city will apply, and that's language the state gave us, so we're just, but I want you to know that we already applied and received the $200,000. This is the standard language that, that's used to allow the mayor to enter into the agreement, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that. So, you know, we talk a lot about these grants. We, we have great success in applying for and securing these grants. We've got good staff, and we've got good engineers and architects that help us. And we've gotten millions of dollars on our own for the city. But, you know, when you, when you accept grant funds, you accept all of the strings attached, and you accept that there are certain things that need to be done that make the project move significantly slower than if you used your own money. So I just want you to be aware of that as I, as I continue to talk about all of the grants, and we just got another grant tonight, a $3.8 million grant for the construction of our, a new river walk. It's not a new river walk, but another segment of our river walk that's going to take it along Ansonia Copper and Brass, which is where the mayor envisions the road being constructed as well out to Route 8, Exit 19, or whatever new exit number it is now, which is extremely confusing. So, so there's that, and that's the beginning, and it takes a while for the funding to actually trickle down to us, so we have to do everything the state or federal government requires for these grants. Now, after that boring introduction, right? Olson Drive. Right, city is currently in the process of crushing the additional oversized rock for reuse as a subbase material and a cap for the field. And that has to be in place in order for the field to go in for this spring. And that's the plan. You will see mobilization tomorrow, according to the contractors, re-mobilization for the rock crushing and the grading and capping. So, you know, it's been a while, but we're back out there. We're getting back out there to do the rock crushing and proceed with the capping. We were waiting on, on specific information from the developer. We did receive that and we're ready to go with that portion. Olson Drive. State Street, another one. That's, that's a $3 million project. It started out as $1 million or actually less than that, but it's, it's, the final design has been submitted to NVCOG. NVCOG now has to select a third party to review what has already been reviewed and then head over to DOT and, and for us to give us the green light. So hopefully, spring 2025, that's the, that's the goal. SHW, we just, we just had a bid for the demolition of Building 12. We had seven respondents. We have not yet leveled the bids, or I would be Uh, we have not yet leveled the bids, or I would be back to you with um. With a, you know, a preferred bidder. They were, the, all the bids in the, in the bottom three were, were quite close. A matter of like one or $2,000. So that's how you know that that's a good, pretty good number. Um, appro- approximately in the 1.5 million dollar range or less. Um, and that's, and that's good for Building 12 because it was 1-5 to demo Building 11 and Building 12 is bigger. So it's good on us if we, if we can get it done cheaper. Um. Boy, I don't know if that's long enough to preclude any questions, but. I think that's about all I have for now. I don't, I don't know if anyone has any, but I gladly take them.
Questions from the Aldermen?
I'll yield to Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, thank you. Just a, a quick question. Um, I noticed there's a chain link fence. That has been recently put up around the church at the base of Foundry Hill. And uh, I'm wondering, is that, is that to prepare for its demolition?
You know, that's wishful thinking, yes. In a sense, it's to keep that building safe since we now own it. Um, it, but we are um in the process of trying to secure the demolition funding. It, it turned out that, that's a, even though that's a, a small structure and it's a church. Um, it's, it turns out it's in a really strange place. Which drove, drives the cost up because of the high elec- electrical wires. And it's just in a really bad area and the bids that we, we got out or the quotes that we received were really high. Uh, as far as I was concerned, so um hopefully we'll go back out for some lower bids and um. You know, it's, it's, it's only suitable for some extra parking. That's pretty much it if we demolish it. But yeah, we want to keep it safe right now.
That's a very challenging sight, so um, okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Can't have the firemen burn it?
It's.
Little, little training exercise.
That, that's not a bad idea.
Sheila, I had a, I had a question, just uh any updates on the uh animal shelter?
Oh, yeah, so the animal shelter, um, we did receive uh bids. We are going to be coming to you with a recommendation on that. Um, and uh, I think everything's in place to recommend, but we, we didn't uh. We didn't make it for this meeting, so next meeting we'll have our uh, we'll have a schedule for you and the bidder.
Thank you.
Yeah, Caffa is the apparent low bidder. Just wanna, I want to give you guys a um, a schedule of work for them. And if you approve them as being the correct bidder.
Other questions for economic development tonight from the Aldermen? Anybody?
Chicago, no?
No, I'm good tonight.
All right.
He's saving up for the chief.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Move on to Police Chief Wayne Williams. Welcome.
Can I just say no comment?
Now you gotta get a million questions.
Question, chief, just kidding.
Um, I, I will, uh, a quick update on our personnel, uh, just so you know, we have five people in the academy. We have two people that are currently in training that are on uh the streets. Um, we have another five openings. That uh we're trying to fill. Two of those are going to be sergeant positions. Uh, we also have an officer and dispatcher on extended leave and the dispatcher has notified us that uh they're not coming back from that leave. So we're going to be working on replacing that. Uh, before you tonight in executive session is a uh contract draft. For Sergeant Barrera, who was uh promoted by the Board of Police Commissioners after a lengthy process. And that contract draft is, will be in front of you tonight um in executive session. Um, it's anticipated that once that is completed, that Sergeant Barrera will transfer to his new position. Uh, sometime in the beginning of March. Uh, he is currently the administrative sergeant here. Uh, which means he controls the evidence room, our scheduling, et cetera. So we have to uh transition somebody new into that position. As I mentioned, we have two sergeant openings, one Sergeant Barrera is promoted and Sergeant Orlando, who uh has announced his retirement. After 28 years of service to the city of Ansonia and a total of almost 40 years of service uh in law enforcement. So he is leaving our agency in April. Um, so we are working on the process for that promotional system. Um, as I said, we're working on taking applications out for a dispatcher opening. And we're also working on a background investigation of a candidate for our part-time records clerk. So we have a lot of personnel issues going on. Um, we are working on tier two of our police accreditation. Um, we are also transitioning, this is part of the referendum package that went out. We're transitioning now to our new sidearms for the department. They have updated you a couple of times, so. We have made the purchases through the referendum. We took delivery. We have now transitioned about 80%. Of the department to the new firearm. Um, we are using ranges, as I mentioned last time. Between New Haven and Trumbull and West Haven um to get this training done. So we anticipate to be fully transitioned by the end of the month. We are also have started the process of replacement of our K-9 unit uh for the department. As you uh may remember, K-9 Kane um died suddenly um last year. Uh, we are in the process now of working with a new vendor for the purchase and training of the new K-9, the new K-9 vehicle we just took delivery of. Uh, so the selection process for the handlers uh progressing with our physical agility exam taking place tomorrow for uh candidates. We're also prepping for a high-profile trial that is coming up over the next month or so. Uh, we've been meeting constantly and it's going to be manpower-heavy. Um, there are probably 15 or so. Officers, detectives and supervisors that'll be involved in that trial as it goes on. So, uh, other than that, I'll take any questions that you may have tonight. I'll try to keep it short.
Any questions for the chief? Not even Rivers. Well, you really got off easy.
Yeah, I know, he's getting up easy.
I appreciate all of them rivers. I really do anticipate a question from you every once in a while.
All right, we'll move on to uh Superintendent of Schools, uh Dr. Joseph Tobacco.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, President Schuer and members of the Board of Aldermen. First, I would like to say the winter weather is definitely upon us. Um, I got off pretty lucky in December and January, not having to make any. Uh, winter, uh, I guess cancellations, but the weather is upon us and I want to take that opportunity to thank Public Works for all their hard work. And getting our, our streets and roads ready for, for school. That is uh greatly appreciated. Uh, during this time, I think last time I spoke to you, I just wanted to share um some unfortunate news from the state. Saying how they cut our excess cost spending. I know uh Alderman Lovinsky actually emailed me about it. But uh, I know Bobby Tar wasn't surprised when we saw that excess cost money getting cut. But the, what I can share is that there is more and more discussion about special ed excess costs. There is a lot of conversations right now, so what I have been doing is trying to follow. The wonderful pieces of legislation that have been moving quickly uh across uh the state. Some things are gaining more traction than others. Uh, there's a, there's a whole um committee on. Examining the start times of schools and what times and and they want to make the start times later for schools. Every district that I do know that changed their start time has moved back. It's very difficult for parents, especially if you work. To get your child to school when you start an hour or an hour and a half later. It's also very difficult when school starts an hour, hour and a half later to have after-school activities and after-school events. It, it really uh prevents unless you have everything that illuminated outside to have after-school activities and and otherwise. So I'm waiting to see what more and more wonderful legislation um that our legislators propose. And the things that they propose that aren't going to be funded, that are going to fall on the backs of local taxpayers. And local municipalities, because that's what it looks like. Um, I do want to share um some positives. Um, I don't want to just talk about the legislation and how I am disappointed. But I would like to share that on the 24th of January, we had a pink game, a basketball game where we raised money. For one of our staff members uh suffering from cancer. It was an unbelievable event. One thing that uh the city of Ansonia needs to know is that when somebody needs help or assistance. The city of Ansonia really rallies and they come together, and that's why, that's what makes Ansonia, Ansonia. When we say Ansonia is strong, we really mean Ansonia is strong. So I did want to share that. And I also want to share January 31st was our 100th day of school. Many celebrations happen on the 100th day of school around. Uh, all the classrooms, kids get to celebrate, teachers get to celebrate and. Like to just give credit to our, our Board of Education and Board of Aldermen for supporting us to make it to our 100th day of school. And that brings us to any questions that you have at this time as we move forward.
Anyone with questions for the superintendent?
You know, like Joe.
I was taking the night off. Any questions? All right, well, as always, thank you, and I want to uh also thank you for. Um, your help along with uh Principals Nimmons and um Casiello for always making sure we have someone for the uh, the pledge. I know you're involved in that and uh it's infinitely better than anything we ever try, so keep them coming. And I will look forward to next month, but thank you.
You got it. Thank you.
All right, so uh Kurt is here. Do you want to, do you want to speak now or do you want to speak during the communication?
Uh, good evening, Mr. President. I'll speak uh during the communication, uh unless anybody has any specific questions. And members have any specific questions from me now, now we can just move it along to, to none.
Oh, Chief has one for you.
Uh, I'm not responding to currently to Chief Williams.
That is probably the most truthful statement he's made today.
I do owe Chief Williams 30 seconds, though, so.
All right, so we'll move on, uh, end of um public session. We'll move on to um financial reports. First up, the Finance Committee. Get it, Mamon?
Like to make a motion, make a motion to pay all bills if uh deemed correct.
Second.
Motion to pay all bills if deemed correct by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Me opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Second is the uh vote recommendations in your municipal report for February 2025. I believe they met last week. That's in your packet.
Motion to accept the uh vote recommendations as well.
Second.
Motion to accept the vote recommendations by Mamon, second by Yam and all in favor? Me opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Uh, thirdly, we have the request for refunds in the amount of $1,199.67. If found to be correct.
Motion uh as noted.
Second.
Motion by Mamon and second by Yam and again, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Our motion carries unanimously again. Um. Corporation Council mentioned the um, the newly instituted um mayor staff meetings, uh monthly staff meetings. And uh, you saw all those reports in your, in your packet. I hope you uh read them and enjoyed them. Um, so we had from the uh collections administrator, finance department, land use. Town clerk, uh, library and the nature center. And uh, anything else I may have missed? Um, we normally get the um. Fire marshal and others, but I like, just like a blanket motion to accept all those reports and thank those staff for putting those together.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Yam and and second by Mamon. All favor to place those on file?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. And again, as uh John also mentioned, um, if in reading those, any of you ever have any questions? Follow up, whatever, uh, let them know, uh, let me know, whatever, we can. Uh, we can invite the, you know, those, those people to, to a meeting um to clarify, but thank you. Uh, let's see, next up, we have three uh claims under accidents and claims. 10, 01, 25, 1068, Ansonia Orchard LLC. Um, versus City of Ansonia, 01, 25, 1069. Uh, nail Kazavul versus City of Ansonia and 01, 25, 1070. Uh, the same name, different uh address. What's your pleasure?
Motion to refer to council.
Second.
Motion to refer to council by Yam. Who was the second on that?
Both of them. Mayor Rivers.
River. And by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, we had uh three communications and then the late communication that we had at the beginning of the meeting. The first two are actually from me. Um, I'll just briefly summarize, and if you have, uh, if you want further information, I'll give it, but the first one is, is um the. Biannual um recommendation from the Fire Department for the incoming uh fourth assistant chief. Who will then go up the ranks every two years, moving up and uh at the end of the last two years after. Uh, will be the chief of the Ansonia Fire Department. And the nomination was for. Uh, Matt Pitney of the um Hilltop Hoes to become the fourth assistant chief. Uh, this summer when they change over and everyone moves up a, a step.
Make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Back it. To accept by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and congrats. Second uh was a letter from me as well. Um, very briefly, um, the Fire Department has uh obsolete fire equipment. That's not uh supported anymore, old tools, um, that will no longer be serviced if they break down. Others uh items, and as explained in the letter, uh, this is all city equipment, so it has to be. Um, put out there and it has to be approved by us to, they asked to either discard it or um to sell it or. Uh, redistribute it throughout the city if there's another department that wants it. Uh, I gave the list to the finance department. So they have that and um the list is out there and whatever sort of is not transferred, you know, within the city. Would then, you know, either be discarded or or sold off or whatever, so just seeking um permission to, for them to. Dispose of in one way or another.
Hey, Josh?
Yes.
In the past, I think they've used it as like a training aid, if I remember correctly, for some of the. Is it like the junior fireman program or something like that? Is that still potentially what they would do with it?
Um, they, they can use the, the other stuff. I mean, the, these are tools um that uh. That are no longer, like, if it breaks down, there's no, there's nobody to fix it. They're not, they're.
Oh, okay, okay.
The one they manufacture that doesn't work, um, you know, that, that they're not going to fix them. Um, and we've replaced them, if you remember last year, we authorized um. Some new battery operated tools. They actually utilized those recently on Route Eight to have somebody other car.
Yeah, extricate, yeah, good stuff.
Uh, so it's the tools that are, that they replaced.
Okay, alright.
Um, that, that's the majority of the stuff, so.
I'm to uh. Request to uh dispose of it.
I'll second it.
Own, second by Rivers. Uh, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Third uh communication uh is, is a recommendation uh. To award uh for the trash room um removal, which we actually approved uh last month. But this is from the Chairman of, of the Board of Public Works, who uh also was recommending uh the company that we picked. Um, I think it just kind of crossed, crossed the wires between last month and this month, but I'm just looking to put that on file. Um.
Motion to accept the letter and put it on file.
Second.
Uh, motion by Yam and second by Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, and then last uh is the late communication, number one. Um, I said I re- received a letter from Kurt uh in the finance department and uh he's here. To talk us through it. Do you have, do you have that? Um, Kurt, or do you need me to put that up? Oh, there you go.
Yep. Um, so through you, Mr. President, um Richie and Kim uh reached out to. Uh, the State of Connecticut Treasurer's Office, uh, the Debt Management Division. To get a determination of what the final payoffs would be for the two clean water funds. Uh, that we have associated with the WPCA. So as you can see in the memo, uh, the first one. Um, the outstanding principal currently is $131,320. the outstanding principal currently is one hundred and thirty one thousand three hundred twenty dollars and ninety seven cents. And then we have interest of seven dollars and six cents per day in February, which if we were able to pay this off tomorrow, would equate to eighty four dollars and seventy two cents. And then the second one is twelve million nine hundred fifty nine thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars twenty three cents. And that has interest of seven hundred twenty dollars and twenty two cents per day, which is eight thousand six hundred forty two dollars and sixty four cents. Again, if we're able to pay that off. So I would ask for two separate motions. The first one would be to pay note three eleven dash DC with a principal principal amount of one hundred thirty one thousand three hundred twenty dollars and ninety seven cents plus any accrued interest for the month of February. And then the second motion would be to pay note five five four dash C in the amount of twelve million nine hundred fifty nine thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars and twenty three cents plus accrued interest for the month of February.
May I ask a question on this, Kurt?
Yes, absolutely.
Obviously, that second line in the interest of seven hundred twenty dollars a day is rather large, you know, based on the note. When did we request the payoffs from the state?
I believe that was done in the middle of January.
Knowing that we closed in December, do we know why this took so long to do?
I think it was just the process of closing everything out, working with the auditor, making sure that everything was in place, getting authorization that we were able to start using the money, and then the request was made through that process.
Okay.
It was not a requirement at closing. Don't I think that's
No, I get it. I get it. But I would have, I think at seven hundred dollars a day, I guess in my head, I was hoping that would have moved a little bit faster. You know, before accruing, you know, thirty days and, you know, almost twenty five thousand worth of interest. But
Yeah, it was just one of those. It was unfortunately a procedural thing.
Yep.
Again, because we just didn't have access to the money immediately. So we had to wait for sign off from the auditor and then we were able to start the process.
Yep. All right. So if there's if there's no other discussion, I'll just throw the motion out there, Josh, and then you could entertain it. But I'll make a motion to payoff. You know, principal plus whatever accrued interest based on the payoff is going to be for the two notes noted, three eleven dash DC and five five four dash C.
Kurt, do you need those as separate motions?
Prefer? What motion would be fine as long as they're itemized out like Alderman Mammon just did?
Got you.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Mammon, second by Rivers. As noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. And thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have one resignation, but I don't I don't have it in my notes. Actually, I do. One resignation. Kaylee Mahalco from the Ansonia Cultural Commission.
Motion to accept and send a letter of thank you.
Second.
Motion by Yam and second by Rivers to accept and send a letter of thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you for your service. We have no appointments this month. Under resolutions, we have one. This is was mentioned under Sheila's update, authorization for grant application in Sonja Opera House assessment project and assistance assistance agreement.
No match.
No match.
Already secured.
Secured the two hundred thousand dollars. The wording is is in the resolution itself. I am not going to read it. Just seeking to adopt this so that they can process the money.
Make a Go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna say I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute and accept.
Second.
Motion by Yam and second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Ordinance, we have was mentioned a little bit in Corporation Council update. The Ordinance Committee update and then establishing the public hearing date. We established the public hearing date for March eleventh at six P M before the Alderman meeting. Alderman Yam, do you have any further information or you want to talk about this at all, the 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 meeting of the Ordinance Committee?
These are the two items that were mostly discussed. There were two other items and including license plate or out of state vehicles and stuff like that. And there's an enforcement mechanism that was discussed that's already in place, so that we're going to be able to start doing that. But I'll just add that the the housing code that has been mentioned has been in the works for about seven or eight months. John's put in a lot of work on that. And the storefront vacancies are relatively new and probably need some adjustments. But we're we're looking forward to comments from the public and feedback from this board as to both.
And and just to clarify, will will the public be commenting on the draft version that that?
That, yes, that's the that's the public hearing. Public hearing is to get it out there, get it published, make sure they're available on the website so the public can see them, review them, and then come to the public hearing with comments and possible suggestions and any changes that they think, you know, maybe prudent or this board may think is prudent, and we can take that back to the Ordinance Committee and then revise as needed.
Great. Thank you. So we'll look forward to that for next month. Thanks for your work on that and those other initiatives. New business, we have two items. First one is, we'll turn it over to Alderman Lovinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make everyone aware that Friday, we have a very special date at the Police Department. It's going to be Chief Wayne Williams thirty fifth service anniversary. And to commemorate such a milestone in his long and successful career, on behalf of the full board, I'd like to present Chief with a commemorative plaque. Let me read it to you. It says, Ansonia Police Department, Chief of Police Wayne Williams, presented with sincere gratitude for thirty five years of dedicated service to the citizens of Ansonia. February fourteenth nineteen ninety through February fourteenth twenty twenty five. Let me take a picture and congratulations, Chief.
Well, that's nice.
Nice job.
Or clap and chief, it's just that everyone's on mute.
Everybody's muted, right?
And chief.
I
Congratulations.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much for the award. Not necessary, but very much appreciated. You're right, this Friday does mark the thirty fifth year as an employee.
Wow.
And it's truly been quite a ride. I started here after turning twenty one years old. I was twenty one for a month when I started, so I'd never been in Ansonia on my first until my first day getting hired. I was from I was from north. I didn't know much about Ansonia. But I appreciate it. City's been a part of my life for over three decades. I couldn't have asked for a better place to work or live. So I'm honored to lead the department. They gave an opportunity to some snotty nose twenty one year old kid back So thank you all to for those I've worked with, worked for, and now that I've supervised over the years. Thank you to the board, Mayor Cassetti. And a special thank you to Alderman Lovinsky. I know that you were very instrumental in spearheading that award. So I do appreciate it. And you'll have to stop down and see me and we'll have a coffee.
Continued success, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief, did you Chief, did you plan that for Valentine's Day?
You know what? I was told that I found my true love on Valentine's Day.
There you go.
She was called in Sonia.
That that goes all the way back to Mayor Clifford is the one who hired me. And so I still get to see him every once in a while around town. And he reminds me of that. I will tell you that there there are a lot of people have come and gone, and there are two employees who I came on with thirty five years ago. So they I came on in February, they came on in April. So Lieutenant Patrick Lynch and Sergeant Chris Flynn are celebrating their thirty fifth years in in April.
Alderman Lovinsky has been notified. He's on notice, yes.
Got your work cut out for you, Tony.
Oh, he it's
He's just very excited.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we have, let's see, one more item under new business, two to Elm Street, change of use discussion. Who wants to address that, John?
Somebody talk. Oh, can I? Josh, I'd like to speak about that. Just just let me set the stage. So you're not you're not approving a change of use. That's not what this board is, you know, has authority over, but that's planning and zoning. But planning and zoning would not entertain a change of use for that building without the board approving it first or, you know, sanctioning it. So the Two Elm Street project, if you recall, was going to be a
Data Center.
A data center, right? The company that the that the builder was working with has since filed bankruptcy. They do have an internet provider that's going in on the basement, in the basement or lower level. But they they are going to be requesting a change of use because they're they're contemplating doing residential there. And I will just point out to you, okay, well, I'll just point out to you that it's zoned B, which is for one family and two family homes. So in order to do apartments, they would need to go to planning or planning and zoning, maybe or request a variance for for apartments or if they contemplate doing something like Lincoln, the Lincoln condominiums in the old Lincoln School. So that's that's, I think, you know, and the the intent was to bring this issue up to you folks to try to get some clarity on what or direction on what you would envision there. I know that you did approve, again, approve it for commercial use. And that looks like that's not going to be feasible at this time. So. But at the time we approved it, that was also brought up that they were going. There was some speculation they wanted apartments and this board looked at it and said, no, we will approve it for commercial use only. And now it's all of a sudden the company went went bankrupt and now it's someone else is going in with the same intention as what the original intention was. Yeah, no, it's 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 a little strange because the the company came to me first, came to City Hall, said, we're, you know, we're an internet internet, high speed internet company, et cetera. And do you have any space? So my inclination was to refer to the Two Elm Street and that turned out it worked. It worked out okay. And and they will be housed there. I just you know, and I think maybe someone who is working with the developer is on the line, but I'm not sure. I just, you know, we just wanted to bring this up and and see what what the what your thoughts were.
Alderman Cassetti?
Yeah, that's in my ward. I would entertain a shared use. If it is commercial in the basement and no more than one bedroom apartments.
Oh.
One.
I don't know if we could make that
I don't know if we can put that on there.
Single bedroom apartment.
So this was a city property that was sold according to city conditions. So the city has absolute authority to say what conditions it's going to allow to depart from what what you already did. Okay? So that's the way it works. I mean, the city's property, city can put conditions on it. Conditions aren't met. City basically can take the property back, would have to buy the property back. My concern I would have, I mean, obviously, consider any change of use that you would like. You also can consider get option B, which is taking it back. Obviously, they paid for it, so you'd have to return the money, but you could take it back. Option, however, as you know, before either options considered, I'd also raise this. You know, what the condition that you authorized came with a value. Are you changing it to a condition where there should have been more value exchanged? Right? So I would just want to make sure that you're not allowing a use that would have that would have entitled the city to more money, to understand.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good question.
Can we get that reappraised then as a as a potential new use?
You you could, if you have an interest in considering their proposal, you certainly could have that use appraised. We have the original appraisal. We can have a supplement based on that use and to make sure that the city obtained fair value. Because you wouldn't want to have that alteration short the city out of value, right, that it should have gotten.
Hey, Josh, question?
I'll be good.
I don't understand, though, if they purchased the building from us for the use of a data center and they go bankrupt, why would we have to return money that we? No, they're not bankrupt.
I don't, yeah, I want to clarify. I don't think the, I think they had a tenant plan to come in there that was a data center, correct, or no?
Correct, and they went belly up.
Yeah, still the same owner.
Oh, so the person who bought the facility from us still owns it? Yes.
Yeah.
And they And they bought it with the and they bought it with the understanding that we agreed to sell it for this specific use. Is that correct? Right, okay. And they're not, you know, they're not, they're doing fine. They're just, they don't have any issues. So this is really their second request to us to change it into apartments?
Exactly.
Okay, because we said no the first time. That's that's, but it's still the same owner. We're not out any money. No. Okay, okay.
Excuse me, I I I gotta speak on this. This is my words as well. And I don't know if that's a good place for apartments. First of all, I don't think there's a lot of parking there. And it's not for a lot of residents that are living there that are going to have to deal with this.
Do they have a parking lot?
It's a parking lot, but I don't gonna hold a lot of cars.
That's why I would determine how many apartments they would put. And doing a one bedroom would be good. I'd like to see maybe an age restricted, like a fifty five older residents, that would have the least negative impact on the neighborhood.
But
and that's when we need more.
But just it's just to chime in, you know, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse in many ways because you the the value of the the property can't be considered for residential use other than a single family house because it's zone B. So the zone, the zone change would have to be in place before, one, the value of the the value of the property is actually for you can be appraised as an apartment. I mean, we can get a hypothetical appraisal, I suppose, just to find out what it would be. But then it's up to planning and zoning to determine whether or not there's a zone change that can occur anyway. So there's actually more than one hurdle here. So in terms of what we negotiated that price for being commercial, being what it was going to be, that's they're still eligible to use it for that because that hasn't been taken away. It's whether it's whether or not, one, the value could change with a zone change. So whether or not, I don't know, John, i- in terms of getting an appraisal, that's us doing a hypothetical appraisal in that sense now or waiting until a a zone change is even something that is considered by planning and zoning. Because the planning and zoning says no, then that that appraisal, why are we paying for an appraisal?
Yeah, I would want to make sure, of course, you're in the driver's seat and not planning and zoning. You know, this board sets the condition. It shouldn't be up to planning and zoning to depart from the condition. You know what I mean?
I do, but in the in the in the same sense is that, I mean, I understand getting the information and getting the appraised value of what it could be if it was if it was residential. But at that, even if we got that appraisal, it still could go to planning and zoning and planning and zoning can say no.
Yeah. We're not gonna do this. I would say if this, yeah, I would say if you guys are okay with it, then you do the investigatory work to say, okay, well, first, did we get enough money for it? And second, is planning and zoning going to do what they need to do because they're independent from you? Are they going to allow it? So I think it begins though, if you decide what if you want to, look at this.
How can we go back and ask for more money if we already sold it? I mean, that's kind of like, that's where I'm having a hard time, even if it would appraise for more money as apartments. So then we turn around and go, oh, you owe us money.
They bought it on a condition, a condition you set.
It was a conditional purchase.
Satisfy the condition. There can't be a purchase.
I don't think John, am I allowed to talk here, Sheila?
Through you, Mr. President. Through you, Mr. President, that's, it's up to you. That's Paul Rodriguez. He's with the.
I'm partners with Freddie.
Oh.
No.
Oh.
Although that's appropriate, but um. Board, if the board wants it, I, I'm okay with it, but.
No.
No, I don't think it's appropriate.
No.
Sheila, I have a related question to Joe Jomans. Um, I know that the lower end of the street is a historic district, correct?
Correct.
Um, does the historic district extend? Up the hill to number two?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I, I mean, I think this has real implications for a zone change. And uh, you know, I, 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 I would defer to the two Aldermen representing this, this area. Um, but you know, if it were used for apartments, I think, you know, the, the concept of a single bedroom. Uh, senior housing, over 55 housing would uh, would, would be more appropriate, given the historic nature of the neighborhood.
Alderman King, did you have a uh question or you just have your hand on it?
Yes, um, we were talking about the zone and how that would prevent this. We need a zoning change. To make it residential. And the first plan that we approved. We approved residential.
No.
It was gonna be data center on the first floor and apartments on the second.
Absolutely not.
No.
No, no, we didn't.
Ah.
Yeah, you can go back and look at the benefits from that meeting. Because they said residential. Apartments. Okay. Alright.
Maybe we need to put this on for another time. And go back and look.
But I, I do not, I remember that, and my thing is, is that um. When this came to us, it came to us either or. And we all. Were against apartments. So, I mean, this. This looks like a end around to me.
Right.
If it's gonna be apartments, to be better off, we made it a city project for our housing and take it back. That would be the most benefit. Because we basically gave that property away, and if it's gonna become all residential, the building actually would be worth a lot more. So. It's a bad deal for us, and if the conditions aren't met. We should probably just look into. Taking it back and putting it back out for sale or. Taking it and using it for our own purposes.
Condominium.
Uh, other comments?
One-lane room condominium.
Well, I, I, I mean, I think John's suggestion of getting, getting evaluation makes sense to know what we're dealing with before we go and do. You know, and be, before we go and, and try to, and, and back up, and then give the, you know, first of all, the first, the owner. The opportunity to meet the condition if they want to, and if they don't, if they want to propose a different one, once we know the value of what they might be proposing. Um, they can present it, they can present it at that point in time, and we can deal with them either meeting the condition. Or um, you know, um, work, we can work. Trying to get the, either get the value of the property or then consider like what Dan's talking about, purchasing the property back. But I think, I think we need to know the dollar amount first before we go.
The first step would be the owner to uh. Get a zoning plan passed. Once that's done. We, we can get a uh, an estimate of the value.
Well, Joe, I, I think what I'm, what I'm suggesting is we, we would know beforehand before, because planning and zoning sending this to us because of the contingent purchase. Or the contingent sale, they want to know if we, what our position would be on a zone change. I'd like to know the value. Of what the property would be valued at under the posi- the condition that is being considered. Offering a zone change, right, for, for residential. So if we know what the value is, so I mean, I, I, I think at this point, um. I think that makes the most sense, as John suggested, as a course of action to know what we're dealing with. So if need be, I mean, I'll make a motion um to, to get an appraisal. On the property. Joe.
I still think that the owner. Is obliged to get a. Uh, a zoning permit. And it has to have a plan. He must present a plan to zoning.
Ho- hold on.
Not some planning and zoning. You gotta go to the zoning board.
But. Okay, but they're only here because. The building department, department recommended going to the board of Aldermen. To get their take on what they thought. Or otherwise, they would have done it that way, so it's not their. Exactly their fault. They were told to come to the board.
They likely did the right thing, because it looks like they can't satisfy a condition of the.
Right, right. So, and John, and that was always what I was gonna ask. We're dealing with two separate things, right? Like, one, first, they have to meet the condition of the purchase. And that was through our board, and the second thing is, is that if they want to change the condition of the purchase. Number one, we would have to give permission, and then they would have to go to planning and zoning to get the zone change. So I think coming back to us, but I would like to know the difference in valuation. What we sold it to them for with that specific condition of a data center versus uh a split-use. Commercial and residential above that, and in terms of what you were suggesting, Joe and Joe, knowing it's your ward and what that would look like in terms of residential. That would be the zone change, going from a B to whatever with planning and zoning, and then the site plan as it's presented to planning and zoning, planning and zoning. That's not really our purview to determine how many and what, and what the parking looks like and stuff. Planning and zoning has to make sure it meets the regs. Through them, but I think for our purposes. The contingent sale. The contin- that, that condition is not being met currently. So we have to, we have to determine whether or not, you know what I mean, there's a change in valuation to determine that. So that's why I'm suggesting. What John had said, evaluation at this point in time, determining if. We sold it for less than what we could have gotten for it with the proposed zone change and go from there.
Exactly. Can we table this?
That's what I said.
No, wait a minute.
First, we have, we have a motion to. For the appraisal. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Yamman, a second by Cassetti to. Get it, get an appraisal.
Yeah, and I think it's a point of discussion, a point of discussion really quickly. Joe, Jeanetti, to answer your question in term, in bu- in terms of tabling it. I think once we have a little bit more information, we'd be able to have a more fruitful discussion as to where we want to go with this. Whether or not, you know, Dan's idea of, of purchasing the property back or whatnot, um, because we know what, whether or not residential. Is feasible and what the change in value would be.
Gotta know what the value is.
Joe, Joe Yamman question, so if, if, if there is some sort of zone change, does that change the entire zone that it's in and make it somewhat of a mixture juice?
There, there's two ways of doing it. I mean, not, they can go about asking for a zone change for that specific lot. Or they can go about a- asking for a, a special exception, I believe. Uh, to change, to change the zoning on that, but e- either way, it takes going to planning and zoning and getting a modification of the existing regulation. Because I don't think they meet the conditions of a variance to go through uh the zoning ZVA. Um. But I'm just speculating. I mean, I'm not. Looking at it, so.
No, I was just kind of curious for perspective on that. Thanks.
Yeah.
And just for a little bit more background, there's an attached lot. That is paved and it belongs to that. Property and it's.
It's ours.
Would be allowed for parking. Well. I got a question with that, too. I mean. That, that parking lot in the back there.
Right.
Um, residents use that parking for like, the other day we had a storm. So a lot of the neighbors around had to park their cars in there. If there's cars parked there for the apartments. Then. Where are these people gonna park during storms? Also, the fire department uses that for meetings and. Calls and things like that. I mean, there goes our public parking lot to let them use it for the apartments.
And that, again, Joe, that's another thing that planning and zoning would have to take into consideration, because every time they, they, they do the site plans for any of these. Um, apartment buildings, they have to count the number of parking um to make sure it matches up. So that would be something that would be put on them, but for us, I think our purpose is just. What, determining whether or not they're meeting the condition of the sale.
Agree.
So we, we have a motion in a second. To, for the appraisal, do we want to vote on this? All in favor of, of going that direction?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, so we'll take that up later. Hey, Yamman, if I didn't know any better, I'd say you may have moonlit as a um, planning and zoning. Chairman. Your life.
Well, once upon a time, a long, long time ago.
He thinks he knows a lot about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, so um, we'll pick that up in the future. Uh, there, is there anything under, we don't have anything listed under old businesses. Is there any old business to take up tonight?
Motion to move into executive session.
So, as a reminder, we have three items under executive session. We have the um, management contract for police. We have the um. Uh, discussion of 264 North State Street and also the one that John. Is a third item. Uh, so John, who we need other than the usual suspects?
Excuse me. This is, this is Lisa Brayley. I'm from Derby. Um, and I'm wondering if I ca- I tried to go to the Aldermanic chambers, because I didn't realize this was a Zoom meeting. Would it be possible for me to speak as in late public portion?
Uh, no. That, that was over like an hour and a half ago, but uh.
I know, I've been listening the whole time.
Feel free to uh contact me and we can, or, and or uh come in the city when, if you have concerns. We will definitely address them.
Yeah, we're, we're interested in discussing Derby's 350th anniversary. As, as brought up by, by myself earlier.
Yeah, perfect.
I, I'll, I'll come to you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All my contact information's on the website.
Um, perfect. Thank you for letting me in. I appreciate it. Okay.
Um. So John, who do we need other than uh city staff?
Myself, Chief Williams and Sheila.
Okay.
That's all, Dylan.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Thank you.
Motion to come out of executive session, Mamon, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, so in executive session, we had three items to discuss. I'll take them in order. Uh, first one was. Um, consideration of management contract, police department. What's your pleasure?
Um, make a motion to approve the contract and authorize the mayor to execute.
Second.
Motion by Yamman, second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Second item was 264 North. State Street and 188 North Main Street.
I'll make a motion to deny the claim.
Thank you.
Motion to deny the claim by Yamman, second by Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Our motion carries unanimously, and the third one was uh Benchmark. Versus Ansonia.
Yep, motion to take no action.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Yamman, second by Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That motion carries unanimously. And that's pretty much a wrap. Except for Rivers.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Rivers, second by Tar.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.